I'd like to call the meeting, the Mandan School Board, to order. We are in the Bosch Fairleigh Room of City Hall. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to welcome our newly installed and elected board members, Darren Hoggan, Kama Hoovestal, and Marnie Peel. All were elected to another three-year term, and Tim Rector was appointed for a one-year term. All board members have taken their oath of office. Welcome, we're glad you're here. And with that, I will accept nominations for Board Chairperson.
Dr. Bits, I'd like to nominate Sheldon Wolf to be Board Chairperson again.
And I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Ms. Ova, will you call the roll?
(inaudible)
Yes.
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 Peters?
Yes.
Rector?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Peel?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all very much for putting your faith in me for another year. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Bits, for starting off the meeting for us. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda then, is accept the nominations for Board Vice President.
I would nominate Rick Horn.
All right. We have a motion for Rick. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Do we have any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing none, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rector?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Horn. And we'll move on to the next items, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda? Dr. Bits, anything? Any board members have any changes? All right, what are the wishes of the board on the agenda?
Move to approval.
Ms. Du said that down here. Mr. Hoggan?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hoggan?
I'll second.
And Mr. Peters, second. Any further discussion? Questions? Seeing none, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Yell?
Yes.
Rector?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Hoggan?
Yes. Yes. Moving on to public communications, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing nobody in the audience, we'll move on to the next item, which is the Administrator's Report. The first item on the Administrator's Report is an update on the placemaking grant from Andrew Stromme. Mr. Legacy, anything you want to add before he starts?
No, I just want to welcome Andrew Stromme. If you don't know him, he's the city planner for Mandan. He has really taken the lead on our placemaking grant, which if you're not familiar with it, this is the site at the current high school. We're working on some redevelopment plans for that, the entire site, our whole 18 acres there. Andrew's done a great job of taking the lead in that, and I'm excited to have him here and to give you guys an update where we're at.
Welcome, Mr. Stromme. And we'll turn it over to you for your presentation. And how would you like questions at the end or as we go?
As you'd like to ask them. Yeah, you can bug me or ask at the end, doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'd just like to thank Ryan and again Chair Wolf for having me again tonight. I don't have anything to hand out to you, but what we can do is leave you with some slides. I can get them to Ryan and follow up. That way, there's a whole slew of them, and I see you have a full agenda tonight, so I'll try my best to get through this fairly quickly. But as Ryan mentioned, we're getting towards the tail end of this study. We've done a whole lot, and I hope to catch you up on that pretty briefly. There's some times in here, I'm going to try my best to not take that long. But where we're at right now is we're probably closer into this blue area, where we're taking some of the planning ideas that have came into fruition and moving them into kind of an implementation schema, where we're trying to line up some resources and practicalities to end up with a plan that the city either intends to adopt or accept within the next month or so. Up to this point, we've done a pretty thorough review of how this site lines up with adopted city plans. Of course, any development in Mandan has to follow the city's plan or its ordinances, typically both. And there's been a considerable amount of research that's been done to look into our land use plan, our recent economic development plan. That were those two slides that I just departed from. And in summary, the plans and existing conditions are included all in this slide deck. You can kind of see how the site, we're all familiar with, there's a lot of houses around it, there's some businesses around there, but primarily it is just a lot of low-density residential and park space and potentially developable land west of our community and just west of this site, which we'll need to get some stuff through in order to see that, to see that happen in the future. Continuing on kind of with the summary, this slide touches on some of the facilities when they were built, et cetera. I'll try to move on from this stuff fairly quickly, but the key recommendation from here is that there is not going to be any recommendation in this plan to save any component of this site other than the All Seasons Arena and the Braves Center. The recommendation from StanTech and supported by the city, by the school district and parks, et cetera, is to see this site as a development opportunity with pretty much everything going except for those two facilities, which would be inclusive of the gymnasium and auditorium, which are facilities that a lot of our community members have asked about. And kind of through thorough research, it's thought that that would reduce the likelihood that someone would want to take on this redevelopment project if they had to inherit the liabilities or design around that site retaining those facilities. So it's good to have that, have that shored up by the firm that's helping us with this StanTech. We're seeing a lot of strong population growth in Mandan, particularly even stronger than the rest of the metro area. And these are all just data slides that touch on there being a strong market to do something thoughtful and intelligent with this site for our community as the board and the district move on from it and the community see something new go through there. This slide touches on where some multifamily development is in Mandan and when it was built. And you can see, cursoring over the high school site, that's an area where we have a gap, where there isn't a lot of multifamily housing. And that's something that the city does need to see to be able to provide housing for all types of people, all ages, within our community as part of our strong residential market. This slide just touches on how many folks live in Mandan, work in Mandan, vice versa. And it's kind of intended to show that there might be some support for some sort of mixed use development, for example, where there could be a combination of office and employment, but also residential at the same time. This slide shows a gap between our community and some peer communities related to the amount of retail space, which shows that there's just additional demand for some mixed use development, which could be something like a bookstore or coffee shop, restaurant, for example, on the site. Kind of skip over that. This one will be one that you might want to look at, just to see how some of the real estate development interviews that we've had show a lot of support and practical feedback that we intend to run with with this site. In general, folks have been, folks have been pretty supportive from the development community, and it's been really helpful to have their advice on what sort of things we should run with from the experience they have developing in our community and in our state. But kind of in conclusion, it's of course a very large site. It's got a lot of connections to things that folks want to leverage in the development, like trails and parks in our core downtown area, which is really shining lately. The proximity to downtown and 994, as I mentioned, are key strengths, but also its ability to be within an established neighborhood reduces the infrastructure costs that a developer may need to bring in, and it also gives them some inspiration and foot traffic, for example, to leverage as they put some plans together. With the westward expansion, that definitely strengthens any commercial opportunity on this site. Great views and open spaces on this site, of course, looking to the west with scenic open areas that have to kind of remain in that state. And strong traffic counts along Sixth Avenue, excuse me, as it turns into Sunset, definitely enhance some of that small-scale retail and neighborhood kind of amenities that folks want to see on the property. Contrasting that with demand, we're in a pretty healthy commercial economy at the moment. Job growth is pretty strong here in Mandan, and consistent population growth is something that we're seeing pretty much everywhere we look. We have relatively low commercial and housing vacancies, and housing prices are rising. Those are two key indicators that support the creation of new commercial and residential space. And in this particular area, there is a deficit in intergenerational housing, which would be senior housing patio homes, for example. And this is just some data that we're trying to use to kind of land on some direction on what to go for with this site. Kind of closing out, there is an element of it being underserved with retail and commercial services near this site. There's been a lack recently in the construction of new multifamily and commercial spaces in our community, and it's relatively limited, the development potential, say for example, between the core of our community in downtown and Interstate 94. So this represents a big opportunity to accommodate a lot of different things that folks might want to see and that the development community might want to deliver on the property. So that's kind of the study part of it. And on the feedback, we've been fortunate to have a great summer of events in our community, good weather as well, which definitely brought out some crowds. And throughout the feedback that we collected through a number of different exercises, we found a lot of support for access to improved trails, parks, and open space, which is an area where we hope to try and kind of find a blend between a developer dedicating some of this and maintaining some of these facilities, but also finding ways that we may be able to leverage the resources and capacities of our park district to deliver some of that on our site as well. There's definitely interest and opportunities for public art, culture, and entertainment, and that could be something like some of the utility box wraps that you saw, or a mural, for example, or something like a farmer's market, or an amphitheater. And the public spaces and facilities, which is not a surprise, placemaking and placemaking in general is all about activation and the public realm. But there's also support for housing, small business, retail, for example. This was an exercise that was done where we gave folks, I think we gave them like $10 and let them spend it how they wanted to in these buckets. This is another slide you'll want to take a look at, just to see kind of some of the standout things that folks saw as desirable, that they'd like to see in our community, some of the iconography of Mandan and western North Dakota, and how they'd like to see the site leveraged and activated in the future. We had a survey that was out through the middle part of May. We received 150 responses, and pleased that about 60% of those folks are residents of Morton County, and as you pan in closer, over a third of them lived near the high school site. Kind of some of the key excerpts is folks just want us to be thoughtful in what we do and to plan for the long term with this property. I'll skip over that, but this was a fun exercise that I was a part of where we were at Touch a Truck, and we did the same one, I believe, at Buggies and Blues and some other places around town, where we just gave folks some stickers to show what they would like to see, and kind of zooming in on this. You may have even participated in it, but you can sort of see how folks voted for stuff like single-family and apartments, mixed-use townhouses, for example. And then on the right side, how different sorts of businesses might be. So a lot of folks want to see, of course, the usual restaurants, coffee, music venues, that sort of thing. And these are things that we would be able to accommodate on the site by realizing mixed use development on the property, which would be that kind of downtown-style businesses on the main floor, apartments or condos on the top. This one's more specific to what I would call the life in between buildings and how folks would like to see that look. And this is where we try and kind of leverage the open space to be an activated area with things like a picnic shelter or a community garden or a performance space, cross-country skiing, all sorts of different things. And folks generally want to see opportunities to be outdoors, have wide sidewalks and public art, which are all things that are relatively attainable. Had some community design workshops where we kind of panned in a little bit more. I think we had about 20 or so folks that came out for this exercise, where we actually had drawn to scale different sorts of buildings and let folks kind of lay them out on the site, so you can sort of see how these concepts came together from the left. How we did it is like these cutouts of houses were actually how big the house would be on the site, for example. So you couldn't fit more than what could actually fit on the property. And what was done was the cutouts were then turned into some renderings. If you haven't had the chance to see these, I'd appreciate taking a look at them, because these sort of show how the site might be developed, by taking all of those market-supported land use types and many of the place-based activation components, such as a splash pad, for example, or a walking trail, to kind of create that sense of place on the property. So we created three different alternatives that were put together. You can see Concept A, and I just wanted to note that these are annotated, so you can sort of see how, see an example of what those would look like or might look like in our community. So for example, Jay would point you to this up in the top right corner there. Realize the screens are kind of small. So Concept B, this one was particularly unique from the others in that it kind of would ask that development partner to help create a trail system that would bring the trail from Sunset Park closer to our core community in the older part of town. This would be just where, about where Eighth and Sunset meet, sort of where the auditorium is today, and again with that similar transitional component on the site. And Concept Three, or Concept C, rather, is similar in nature to Concept A with how it lays out different development types. And we've had the opportunity to present these to the public at a few different open houses, including at Art in the Park and the Fourth of July Parade. And since doing so, the team has kind of contemplated all the feedback that we received, and we're to the point where we have to kind of pick one. And we're not going to take one of these and just run with it. We'll probably take what was inferred as support or concern from a mix of these and end up with one alternative that will end up being rendered out. And the intended product, I'm kind of getting to my end here. So the intended product is, we'll hope to have a concept, site plan, and some renderings that the city, parks, and schools can use as we try and put ourselves out there looking for someone to help us with the redevelopment in the future in the real estate development area. So it'll be hopefully something glossy and exciting that summarizes the market demand and the potential that this site has. And that's something that we'll intend to see in about the next month or so, I believe. So that sort of wraps up what I had to share with you tonight, but I'm here for any questions that you have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stromme, any questions? Go ahead.
It's more of a comment than a question, but I just wanted to commend the city and StanTech. There have been so many opportunities for public input, and I think that's really important. And if people haven't seen that, I know that you're really open to having one-on-one conversations, and I think it's such an important part of the community. It's kind of right in the middle of it, and people have a lot of connection to this old school, and what's going to happen next is a big deal. So I just want to commend you for how many opportunities for public input there have been, and if anyone's missed it, that they can always reach out to the city to learn more, to provide input, and I know you'll keep being out there, but I just think that's so important for people, and so thanks.
Yeah, and with that in mind, if anyone's watching or wants to have a way in, or if you are talking to folks, you can get in touch with me at cityofmandan.com/planing.
All right. So what's kind of the next steps in regard to it? You know, you said you're going to put together one or two concepts that kind of pull all the information together, and then it's kind of done at that point, or?
Yeah.
Kind of what's the next piece here?
Thanks, Chair Wolf. So I'm going to try and find my timeline again here.
Yeah, you had a piece on there, and you kind of, it was pretty quick, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So where we're at now is sort of, as I mentioned, we're kind of moving from blue into yellow, turning plans to implementing priorities. And this step, as we kind of adopt one of these preferred site layouts, will be accompanied with a number of strategies that we may choose to employ to help us see this through. There are a lot of strategies that could be used from the city's standpoint. There may be some guidance that is provided to us as we collaborate with the development partners and with the school board and the park district to be able to see part of this through. But that's really where we go from here, is we go from the dreaming phase to how do we actually do this? It's not necessarily the first time that this has ever been done. Redevelopment happens all the time in our country. So we'll just look for a couple more meetings with Ryan, Mike, Cole, Jim and I, and some other folks to really sit down and say, what's the timeline on this? Because I know you're not moving out of the school tomorrow. It's going to be a little while until we get to that point, but it's where we try and make capacity to get this ready for redevelopment and line up some resources to maybe sweeten the deal a little bit for that person or that group of folks that come in and that are excited about this plan and say that they want to play a role in it. If I may jump in? Yep. And we're doing placemaking here, and we're talking about developing priorities. What's coming next for the school board is we still have to demolish the building. That part's coming with, really realistically, to see things happen on the site is going to be 2025 for us. Part of this process for the school board, remember, we have demolition costs for the building that we don't really have budgeted right now. It's there, we know it's sitting out there, so we need to maximize our return on the sale of this property. I do think this placemaking study is going to really help that. I'm hoping that with all the work Andrew and StanTech have put into this process, that they can kind of build those dreams for developers, and I'm really hoping that we see a return on the investment here.
I agree. Well, and I guess, Mr. Stromme, one thing that has the potential on a couple of those A, B, and C slides you had, with a mixed use there and do it right, that may be the perfect gateway towards the west, where that road extends, it may be the perfect, it'll give developers a chance to kind of slowly leapfrog and be able to afford it rather than, you know, one massive shot at cost going out west.
Yeah, if I may, Commissioner Hoggan, at a minimum, some of the things that we would love to see on this property are just a clear path for how we get west. It's been contemplated for so long and desired for so long, and the actual practical ability to do it is perhaps its most realistic now with the site being available for redevelopment. So that's one of the biggest things that we want out of this.
Okay. Any other questions?
We haven't, we haven't checked with anyone regarding the cost of demolition, have we?
I have, yeah. We have some fairly recent comps to poll across the state that we're looking roughly $13 a square foot. There's 170,000 square feet to demolish of the current high school building, so it's going to be somewhere between $2 and $2.5 million to tear down that building.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, Mr. Stromme, thank you very much for staying late tonight and coming over. I appreciate it.
It's my pleasure. What I'll do is I'll make these slides available to Ryan and have them disseminated to you that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on then to the school board member committee assignments for 2324. Dr. Bits actually had put them in here and you're there. You know, that's based on kind of where we've been in the past. Please take a look at those committee assignments and see if you're still interested in being in where you're at with that. If not, kind of let Dr. Bits or myself know, and we can kind of see if we can move some things around in regard to it. If you've been on a committee for a long time and you want to move or something like that, please take a look at those, as we can go through that and make any changes. The other thing, Dr. Bits, and I know we talked about it, I think just you and I one day, is, you know, the other individuals who put their names in for the school board, you know, and we get around to having those committees, please make sure we get an invite to them, so if they want to be involved, they can be, okay?
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Yeah. As we move forward. All right, anything else you wanted to add on that, Dr. Bits? Anybody got any comments on that? Does that make sense? So if we don't know, probably at the next meeting, we'll just finalize that, or if somebody makes some changes, we'll work through them in the meantime. Next item, North Dakota School Board Association Annual Convention, October 26th and 27th. Dr. Bits?
Yeah, just something you could put on your calendars right now. The registration isn't out yet. The 26th will be the legal seminar, a new board member seminar. I don't think we have any new board members, so. And then the 27th is the annual convention. Just if you're interested, more information will follow. And then DPI and the North Dakota School Board members is having a boot camp for board members on August 7th. If anyone's interested, let me know, and we will get you registered. And that's at the Capitol.
What's all in that boot camp, just for everybody here?
I think DPI goes through all their, each of their departments. They have their federal programs, they have their transportation department, their finance department. They all come in and do a little piece of what they do and...
All right. And who do we let know for both of these?
You can let me, myself, know, and we'll get you registered.
Okay. So let them know. I will tell you, I've been to the School Board Association Legal and the other meetings in ARRG, pretty good meetings, a lot of information there. Moving on to the coal development trust fund loan. Mr. Legacy?
Yeah, included in your packet is our approval letter for our $5 million coal trust fund loan. Just to remind you, this is additional dollars our state legislature made available for us to borrow to help offset inflation-related costs on our construction. This is a really big help, to get $5 million at 2% in our current construction environment. This is great. So I just wanted to make sure I brought this to your attention.
And if I may, I'd like to thank a couple of members of our legislative team, Representative Porter, Senator Shively were instrumental in getting this passed. I did the math on this, and by getting 2% money instead of going out and selling bonds and getting a return of, a loan of that, 4%, will save our taxpayers 1.2 million over the next 20 years. So just a real benefit to our community, and I want to thank the legislators for doing that for us.
I agree. I think, I mean, it does make a big difference for everybody, and that's a reduction in real estate taxes when you think about it. All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is review and consider approval of previous board minutes from June 26, 2023, and accept the Hart River CTE Board Minutes from July 10, 2023. What's the board's wishes?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Horn made a motion to accept the consent agenda. We have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second from Ms. Gazette. Sorry about that, it's up my throat. Any further discussions? Seeing none, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Peters?
Yes.
Peel? Yes.
Rector?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes. Moving on to unfinished business, we have nothing in unfinished business. Thank you, Ms. Gazette. And we'll move to new business, consider designating the Mandan News the official newspaper for, of the Mandan Public School District. Dr. Ritter?
Yes, as you know, we are required to have an official newspaper, and they would be our local one of choice.
All right. What are the wishes of the board?
I would move to designate Mandan News.
Mr. Peters moved that we approve the Mandan News. We have a second?
Second.
I meant to, it was Ms. Peel, second. Further discussions, comments, question? Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Perez?
Yes.
Hoggan?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Peel?
Yes.
Rector?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes. Moving on, consider authorizing the business manager and superintendent to invest school district funds. Pretty self-explanatory in regard to this one, too. What are the wishes of the board?
I would move to consider authorizing the business manager and superintendent to invest in our school district funds.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Peters. We have a sec?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Peters. Do you have any comments, questions? Seeing none, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Hoggan?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Peel?
Yes.
Rector?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes. Next item, consider approval of building principles as the authorized representatives of Mandan Public School District for the school immunization law. Again, self-explanatory.
Yeah, just a reminder, this is nothing COVID-related.
Next item, consider approval of building principals as the authorized representatives of Mandan Public School District for the school immunization law. Again, self-explanatory.
Yeah, just a reminder, this is nothing COVID-related. It's the immunization law we've had for a while. Families are still able to opt out if they choose to. There's just a form that needs to be on file.
Thanks, you, Ms. Dr. Ritterath. That's a good reminder for us all on that. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll move to approve it of building principals as their representatives.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Peters. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Gazette. Any discussions, comments, questions? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Corin?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Director?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes. Next item, consider designating Dr. Bits and Dr. Ritterath as the authorized representatives for all state and federal programs. Again, pretty self-explanatory unless you want to add something. All right, what are the wishes of the board?
I move to approve Dr. Bits and Dr. Ritterath as the representatives for our...
Ms. Gazette has moved to, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Horn. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Beal?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Director?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Corin?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is consider designating the following individuals as supervisors of programs. Title one, Carly Ritterath. Title two, A, title two, Part A, Carly Ritterath. Title nine, Mike Bits. English Learners, Eel. Mike Bits, Homeless Liaison, Kat Dolph. Foster Care Liaison, Lynette Horn. Title six, Indian Education Grant, Travis Elbers. Assessment Coordinator, Perry Just. And Child Nutrition Director, Becky Heiner. Anything you would like to add there?
No, just that the only changes would be myself and then Lynette Horn as the foster care liaison as a new addition for this year, replacing Tricia Johnson for us.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Mr. Haugen moved to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Beal. Any comments, questions, concerns? If not, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Ferris?
Yes.
Corin?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Director?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Corin?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Director?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Corin?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes. Moving on, then we will go into review and consider approval of school board meeting dates. Dr. Ritterath?
They're pretty much a mirror of what we did this last year as far as number of meetings and in what months. So we can move them around or we can approve them as they are in your packet.
All right. And I will just, just so everybody knows, there's a couple highlighted in yellow which are actually Tuesdays following holidays, which we go in at seven o'clock because the city has their meetings on there. And then June twenty-fourth, we're actually at four thirty, which is a little bit earlier. Just otherwise, other than that, it's pretty much the same as we had, I think, this year in regard to it. Any questions, concerns, or what are the board's wishes?
I move to approve the meeting dates as listed.
All right. Ms. Gazette has moved the approval of the meeting dates. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Pierce has seconded. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Corin?
Yes.
Corin?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Director?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Yes. Next item, review and consider approval of securities pledged by local banks to guarantee school district investments. Mr. Legacy?
Yeah, just a, a quick update on what was in your packet. I made a typo on it. The money's deposited, shows twelve thirty-one of twenty-two. That should be six thirty of twenty-twenty-three, so the dates are correct. And just a note, we have funds at BNC, Capital Credit Union, and Dakota Community Bank. Those funds are kept in a sweep account, so they don't need funds directly pledged from our banks. We have a couple other accounts at Starion that, that are managed the same way. They are approved by Century Code, so that's something that's relatively new for us. But going forward, that's kind of how we're going to manage our funds that are out in the banks. Our operating account will continue to be traditionally pledged, so every six months you'll see this one come forward, but just, just to make sure that you're aware of that.
All right, because I think in the last, we've had more than one on here.
Yes, we have.
So we're just on one.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Legacy on this one? Does that make sense for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right. What are the wishes of the board on this one?
I'd move to approve securities pledged by local banks to guarantee school district investments.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Horn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Haugen. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Zed?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Beal? Yes.
Director?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Corin?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes. Next item, review and consider approval of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four substitute teacher pay. Mr. Legacy?
Yes, this would be recommending no increase this year. We're at a hundred and forty dollars a day, and we'd recommend keeping it at that.
All right. Is that consistent with what Bismarck's going to be too?
Yes.
Even between the two?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Since it's the same, do we need to approve that?
Yes, we said it every year. I think, I do think we should approve that.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask the question. All right, what are the wishes of the board?
I'd like to see it at a hundred and fifty dollars, but yet subs. But I would move to approve the substitute teacher pay.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any comments, questions, or discussions? Anything else?
Just to clarify, is that one forty a day? Okay.
Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Director?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Corin? Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Beal? Yes.
Wolf?
Yes. Moving on to review and consider approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four school facilities' rental fees. Mr. Legacy?
Our rental fee schedule is included in your packet. Again, there'd be no change recommended this year.
All right. All right, what are the wishes of the board?
I move to approve the facility rates as posted in the packet.
Ms. Gazette has moved approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Horn seconds it. Sorry, down here. Any further comments, questions, or concerns?
It's actually time.
Peter? Sorry about that. All those, Ms. Ova, please call roll.
Beal?
Yes.
Director?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Corin?
Yes.
Zed?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes. Moving on, next item on the agenda is review and consider approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four child nutrition prices. Mr. Legacy?
Yeah, there is a change recommended here. We have not increased our lunch and breakfast prices since before COVID. Obviously, when COVID hit, we had free meals for everybody, and that put a pause on increasing meal prices. So we're asking for a fairly significant increase this year of twenty-five cents per lunch and ten cents per breakfast. This is also needed, since we haven't upped our prices in a few years. We've fallen behind. Cost of goods has, has increased dramatically, and we do need to increase just to, to make sure that we continue to operate our lunch profitably.
Isn't there also a federal requirement that we got to maintain here too?
There is. We're supposed to be with, sorry, within a rate of free re...
We're not going up enough.
We're not going up enough, but I don't remember what that is.
There's no consequence.
I believe we're supposed to be at three eighty-five a lunch, and so we are still a bit below that.
Okay. All right, that's what I thought. And then the other question I have for, for you guys, and whichever one can answer it is, is the state made a change in what they're covering under the meals, so could you tell us where we were and where we went, just for the public's knowledge?
Correct.
And then the process that they need to, to be able to get that, because some new individuals may qualify now and they may have to do some things that they never did in the past.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Yes, in the past, basically, if you were a hundred and thirty percent of the federal poverty level or below, you qualified for free lunches. If you were between a hundred and thirty percent and a hundred and eighty-five percent of the federal poverty level, you qualified for reduced meals. What the North Dakota Legislature did is they said, we're going to kick in the dollars so that everybody who's two hundred percent of the federal poverty level and below will get a free meal. So more people are going to qualify than ever before. If you were free last year, you're likely, or reduced last year, you'll be free this year. So I think more people are going to qualify, and we're going to do our best to get the word out, to get people to complete those applications.
All right. And, and just following up with that, and this is a question out of the blue for you a little bit, you may not know this, but on the website, is there a place they can